Good evening. I am calling to order the Fountain City Council meeting for January 28th, 2025. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the Bible, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
Six present. Six members present.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to item 4.1, Presentations. Entryway Corridor Update to Council by Mr. McCormick. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present this project I'm very excited about. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Gordy McCormick. I'm the Parks and Rec Manager for the City of Fountain. So what brought this project along is most of us have used exit 128 when you're coming off the interstate. Sometimes our entryways are less than appealing. So during the budget process, we budgeted some funds to tackle this issue. So we want to get after it over the next two years. It's probably going to take us three years just because of the cost of the project, but I have eight slides. I'll go through them. I'm not going to brief you on everything on it. At the end, I'll stop for questions. I got five minutes. Next slide, please. All right. What is water-wise landscaping on this one? We just want to reduce our water usage in the city. I have right now about 78 water meters. Each one of those come with a fee for a bill to the Parks Department. And so if we can put some nice landscaping out there with smart plants that don't use a lot of water and don't require a lot of maintenance, that saves us both time and money that we can put back into our park system. Next slide, please. The other thing I'd like to point out on this slide is benefits of water-wise landscaping is the first impressions matters to visitors and residents. When people are coming into the City of Fountain, we want to really present ourselves as a beautiful city. In the past, we've tried to put mulch in those areas, flowers, and just because their sheer location, all the foot traffic we get in those areas, a lot of times the flowers get picked by kids on their way to school. I was a kid. I did that kind of stuff, so I don't hold it against them. And then like just the traffic going up and down the road, especially this time of year with the snowplow going on there and destroying the plant. So every year we have to go back out and replant the same plant. So whenever we go back and do the landscaping, as you'll see on our last slide, we're going to match the vegetation and plants we put in there to the environment and not the environment to the plants. So we're going to pick plants that can survive the fountain weather patterns, can survive the location they're at as far as soil, and also survive if a little mean kid like Gordy walks by and starts pulling on it, it's not going to pop right out of the ground. Next slide, please. Key water-wise landscaping features. First one, drought-tolerant and native plants. A lot of times you go to cities, you see beautiful plants in there, but they're going out and replacing those every four to five months because they're not native to the area. So we want to go with native plants to our area. So the reason I want to emphasize this is you might not see rosebushes and pretty flowers, but the stuff we're putting out there will survive and it won't be ugly. Next slide, please. Design principles for the entryways. Focus on the seasonal interest and color. So we really want to stick with fountain colors. So whenever we're picking out our shrubs and our grass, we're going to try to pick a lot of greens, a lot of blue stuff to put in there just to let people know that you're in the City of Fountain. Next slide, please. Long-term benefits for the City of Fountain. And this one, just that last bullet right there alone, increase property values for the people who own business up there. And also, I think if they see the city start taking better care of our stuff, hopefully the business owners in that corridor from exit 128 up to Iris Drive will start to have some respect for their property and maybe do a little better job of maintaining their own stuff. Next slide. And so this slide shows the areas we're focusing on. On the far left is the first area we're going to tackle, and that's the area right there by 7-Eleven and the winery as you're getting off. Next area is number three, which is in the middle of the screen, and that's the area right at the intersection of Ohio and Santa Fe out in front of our post office. That area, we've been maintaining it. It doesn't look bad, but we can do a lot better job to make it more appealing. And then the last, the next area after that is Sue's Floral. So the shopping center on the east side of 85, 87, whenever you're heading north, you have Sue's Floral there, the chiropractor. We own all that right there, so we want to get in there and make that look better as well. And then the last project, which I'm probably looking, we're about three years out, is number six, seven, and eight on this slide, and that's the area along Dell Street and 85, 87, from Mayor's Park to the middle school. And that's going to be a very costly area. Right now, it doesn't look bad. The biggest problem we have over there are the pine cones falling in the street, and that looks very tacky. So we've been trying to do a better job of keeping those picked up and looking nice. Last slide, please. And I pulled this right off the City of Fountain Conservation Trust or Conservation website. So these are a list of plants, and anybody in the city that wants to go to and find these plants that are native to our area, it'll show you how much sunlight they need, how much water. So we're going to be focused on pages number five and 16 for selecting the plants. So if anybody has any suggestions for us, we'll be open. But those are the two main types of plants we're looking at. We're going to be looking at ornamental grasses and shrubs. And like I said, because we don't want to spend a lot of money on plants we know won't survive the location. And pending your questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. I think that's a good move in the right direction. Can you go back to the slide where you have the numbered medians, please?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Several years ago, way before any of us sat up here, a previous council made some deals to take care of right-ofaways in front of businesses. And so across the street from three, where I don't want to say the last name of the people who took over Books Automotive because I'll probably say it wrong.
Stalics.
Stalic, thank you. You know, that's one of the areas in front of that business.
Yep.
And I know I went to, I think it was Todd, last year, and said, can we do a research and find out which, you know, all of those that we own, and how can we, you know, take care of those? Are we going to take care of them or turn them back to the property owner, whatever, you know? Because that's one of the frustrations I get from a lot of people. So is that kind of that area?
Yeah, that's, you're correct. We own that area, and we've been mowing it right now, and it's not, it's not as in bad shape as the other eight areas. And so with the limited budget and the multiple-year project, as we get through these first eight, then we'll start looking at those smaller areas that aren't as bad as these eight areas. These eight areas, in my opinion, are the worst areas.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that area by the Stalics, where those grasshoppers last year just ate anything and everything you put in there.
And this year, we're not going to have grasshoppers. Fingers crossed.
Yeah. Hopefully it got cold enough this year, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council members? Sounds like a good idea.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us on to item 4.2, Board Commissions and Committee Appointments. There are none this week. Takes us on to item five, Correspondence, Comments, and Ex officio Reports. And I will start to my right this week with Councilmember Duncan.
Okay. I just would like to start off first by saying thank you to the firefighters that are battling the fires that are in California. Not sure if any of our firefighters have been sent out, but just want to reiterate, you know, firefighters fight fires that we fear, and just want to thank them for helping our neighbors. They are the unsung heroes who risk their lives to save ours. So I just want to say thank you to them. Couple of things that are coming out. I did notice that next week that our property taxes will be coming out in the mail. And with higher costs for groceries and medicine and other necessities, we know that many of our residents are struggling to pay their property taxes on time. And the Colorado Department of Treasury is offering two separate programs. They are offering a tax deferral program, and they're also offering low-interest loans to help pay back property taxes. So they're taking applications. So if you're interested in any one of those, you can go on the Colorado Treasurer Property Tax at state.carolina.us. So those are options for those that are coming out. Another bill that I am looking at is House Bill 251043. And this bill makes several changes to homeowners association. So if you're in a HOA, it's changing enforcement processes on foreclosures. So what I like about this bill is that it decreases the amount of revenue that the HOA gets for foreclosing on a homeowner. So if your house is being foreclosed on and you have, you have interests and you have equity in your home, then you get to keep that equity. So I'm going to be watching that bill to see how that goes because I think homeowners should be able to keep the equity that they have put in their home. There's another bill that I'm watching, and it's about military families who are out of state. They get to do their driver's license renewal online and do it remotely. So I think that's awesome. Let's see. Another bill is dealing with domestic violence that doesn't turn into homelessness. So this bill helps women and anyone that is dealing with domestic violence. And another bill that they're talking about junk fees, and that means that, you know, like when you go to book a hotel or, you know, you're not paying all these hidden fees. So there's a bill that's tracking goods and services, so I will be following those and following up with you on that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hersberg? Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing.
Councilmember Rick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick thanks to staff. Last two weeks, I've been in a lot of offices, the city manager, the deputy city manager, the finance department, the fire department, human resources. Been on all your offices, asking questions, working on some projects. And I want to just say thanks for taking time, making time to help me out. I do appreciate it. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. You can definitely tell that the beginning of the year is off and running in the legislature, as well as the amount of meetings that are carrying up. I went to the CML, Colorado Municipal League's Mayor's Summit last week for a couple of days, and always learn a lot there. And I brought a couple of suggestions back that I've talked to Scott about, so we will see where those go. And also attended online the Front Range Passenger Rail meeting to see what is coming down the tracks. Sorry, folks, I couldn't resist. Coming down the tracks with that one. And then today here in City Hall, Pike's Peak Area Council of Government brought down the long-range transportation plan and had an open house. And they were really happy with the turnout of not only some citizens coming by, but staff coming by and taking a look at it. So if you are interested in what the 2050 long-range transportation plan is, you can go online to Pike's Peak Area Council Governments, and they are taking comments for a little bit more time. There is a bill, I can't get it to pull up, I was looking for the bill number that Representative Pagliisi introduced, and I think we all would be real happy about this one, to get rid of the 10-cent grocery bag tax fee. And so if you would like to see that disappear, you can go online and look up probably grocery bag at Colorado Legislature and send them some thoughts on taking that fee back. And as you know, Fountain does not collect that fee already. We already passed that, but you are charged if you go to the store. We are just not collecting our portion of it. So it would, it's just, we just took a stance on that. So staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one thing. I want to introduce our new city attorney, Chris Strider. He comes with from the El Paso County Attorney's Office. And today is day two. He made it to day two. We're excited to have him here, and so welcome, Chris.
Didn't run him off yet. All right, very good. Good job, Scott. Nothing from Todd? Mr. Attorney, you've been here almost 48 hours now. Anything?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Well, thanks for, thanks for taking us on. All right. Finance?
The only thing I have for you tonight is just that we will be starting our end-of-year audit, and our auditors have been scheduled to come in for our interim audit at the end of February, and then our full-blown audit in April. So we'll be working on closing the 2024 books.
Okay, thank you. Either Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. The only thing that I would offer for you this evening, since the last time we chatted, you may have seen a advertisement for a hiring process that we're going through right now. We've had one resignation of a firefighter, and so we're looking for one. In the last week and a half, we've had over 80 applicants apply for this one position. So super excited about that, really encouraged by those numbers. And so obviously, a lot of those will get washed out based on their qualifications, but we're really hopeful that we get at least one good candidate out of that. So other than that, that's all I've got this evening.
Thank you. Chief?
Mayor, Council, good evening. Just a quick thing. I attended the Region 16 opioid abatement meeting last week. We are now voting members this year, and so I'll be representing Fountain for that, looking for our best interests, of course. And I will be asking for some grant money as part of that to train our officers on a five-hour course on opioid awareness, recognition, and trying to get in front of some of the opioid problems that this nation has. So we're going to do our little part in Fountain. So just wanted to update you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the back row that all have their backs to us? No? Okay. City Clerk?
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And IT? Okay, great, thank you. There is one thing I wanted to bring back that we were discussing yesterday at a legislative committee meeting that I was on that I was not even aware of. There are apparently, where there's some ATM machines, there's also Bitcoin machines. And there is apparently a scam going around where senior citizens are getting the calls of you owe money, you're going to get arrested. Somebody's been, there's apparently one at a 7-Eleven on you went to, somebody told me. And they're getting told to take your money down and convert it into Bitcoin, and then, of course, they drain it out and it's untraceable. So there's a bill at the legislature making it so that at those machines, you can only withdraw $1,000 a day on Bitcoins. So Chief, we might want to keep an eye on that one because it was brought to us through the area on aging, and it's something we might want to consider supporting. So because apparently seniors are getting duped out of their money using those machines, too.
Does it matter if I'm a senior?
Nope. Just don't give them your Bitcoin because I'm not coming to arrest you. And when you are coming to get me, I really appreciate you telling me when you're coming. Councilmember Duncan?
Yes, I have a question for the Chief. Wanted to know, when are we having CPR training, or is it open to the public?
I'll defer to Fire Chief.
I will get you those dates. We do have some community CPR events coming up, and I'll get you those dates and email them to you. Yes, ma'am?
All right, yeah, because that has changed over the years on how you do it. It's changed quite a bit. So, thank you. All right, that takes us to item six, Public to Be Heard. And I only have one card, so here's your warning. Okay, if you want to say something at Citizen to Be Heard time that's not on the agenda, please grab your card at the back and get it over to Chief real quick, and you'll have your time. All items listed under, excuse me, citizens may address council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. So I do have one card here, and it's from Mr. Langley about the American Legion.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for letting me come up here. It's been a while. We had Christmas go on, so we got to go visit our grandkids. And then just the last city council, I fell asleep on the couch and just didn't wake up. So sorry for missing that one.
That is honest.
So on January the 3rd, though, we had our early bird dinner at the American Legion, and we were honored to be able to recognize Sergeant Haley of the Fountain Police Department as the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for Post 38. We had also gone and put his name into the bucket for the District 7 of the, for the, and he won District 7. He also went up to the Department of Colorado, and he won that. So on January the 24th, Sergeant Haley, his wife, and Lieutenant, Lieutenant Walter were able to go up to Fort Collins and be recognized as the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for the State of Colorado for the American Legion. So that was a good thing. Some of the things that we have coming up in the near future, January 31st, which is this Friday, our scouts are going to be having a slopper dinner. And also, our ALR is going to be presenting a check to the Sons of the American Legion Commander for the Honor Bell. So they're going to be presenting a $1,000 check, so that it's going to be going for the Honor Bell for that. And if you don't know the Honor Bell, they're trying to raise money for this community so that one can stay at Pike Peak National Cemetery all the time instead of trading back and forth. February 7th, the Sons of the American Legion are going to be having a spaghetti dinner. February the 14th, our auxiliary is going to have their wonderful chicken fried chicken. And then I just wanted to put on your radars that since our golf tournament was such a huge success last year, we're going to have one, and it's going to be a little bit earlier in the year. So it's going to be on June the 9th at Perry Park. And welcome everybody to come out there and donate some money and play some good golf. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to let people know, this bill you're raising money for is huge. This is not a little school bill. This is, like, I've seen pictures of it in like a trailer.
The bill itself costs somewhere around 200. The bill itself costs around $250,000.
Yeah. Yeah, it's huge. Yeah. So, all right. Thank you for helping with that project. And that's great. The money's going to come in. Thank you. I do have one other card, but it says water rate hike. That is on the agenda. So can I have you just wait until we get to that point on the agenda? to that point on the agenda? And this part is for things that aren't on the agenda. So, okay, you don't have to sign up for when it's public to be heard at that other item. So, all right, is there any, do I don't have any other cards? Do we have anyone online, IT? No. Okay, nobody online. Great, thank you. Okay, that takes us on to item seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed in the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. So we have item 7A on the consent agenda, the minutes from the last meeting. What would council like to do with that? Councilmember Duncan?
I'd like to approve the consent agenda, as staff recommends.
Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to item 8, Old Business. There is none. On to item 9, New Business. And I want to point out something to council. On the agenda, it says A, B, C, and D. However, in your council packet, item D accidentally got labeled as 9B for the water rate study. Spoke to Scott. It does not affect being able to have it because the agenda was advertised correctly, but just so you don't get confused in your agenda packet having two 9Bs. So, we're just going to keep going. Okay. Item 9A, Consideration of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. There were none. Item 9B, Resolution Number 25-004, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY 2025 budgeted funds. Ms. Dale?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The City Council adopted the fiscal year 2025 budget on November 12, 2024, and this is the first budget amendment request for the 2025 budget. And this budget amendment includes salary increases for specific positions according to the updated pay plan for city staff to remain competitive within the current market standards. And the City of Fountain is committed to attracting, retaining, and motivating top talent by valuing the skills, qualifications, and dedication they bring to serving our community. And in summer of 2024, our HR manager, John Garrett, started updating the 2025 pay plan. And this is the final results of all of his hard work and dedication to this pay plan. There were several positions identified within the current salaries that have been identified as below the new pay plan minimum range, most of which are in Public Safety Police Department and the Electric Fund. So with that, if you notice up on the screen, and it's also included in Exhibit A in your packet, the totals by fund are at the bottom on that table there. There's about $1,500, and this is for the entire year. This isn't per month, per pay period, anything like that, for the entire year. It's about a $1,600 increase to the general fund overall, $237,000 increase to the general fund to be public safety tax, the property tax dollars to pay for the police department increases, $75,000 to the electric fund, and $8.82 to the water fund for the year. So a total of $314,000 in increases for these updated pay plan specific positions that are below the current minimum market ranges. So with that, staff is therefore recommending that the budget of the general water and electric funds be amended for these pay increases by the positions listed in Exhibit A, with a retroactive effective date of January 1, 2025. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Okay, I don't think there's, we'll have much trouble with the $8.82. I hope not.
I hope not, too.
All righty. Are there any councils from any, questions from anyone in council? Okay. And these are only specific. This is not everybody in the whole city. Those are just these specific funds for this amount of money. Is that correct?
Correct. It's very specific, position specific, excuse me.
That is a tough one.
I've been struggling all day.
All right, are there any questions from anyone in the audience? Or anyone online? No one online? Okay. Is that a hand raised? Yes, sir? Okay, I didn't, it's like an option. I didn't want to spend your money before you. Okay. Please state your name for the record.
Darrell Kowalszczak, Fountain. I'm concerned about the way we do these studies and whether or not they're, how they're projected. I don't, I don't know. I've asked some questions, trying to see how they're percentage-wise, what kind of percentages we're talking about here. I live in the real world, and we need to look at, you know, are we, are these in line with, like, COLA? Are they in line with? We can't just live by saying, oh, these guys over here are making more money, we've got to make as much as they are. These guys. I've been in business most of my life, and if you do business like that, you go broke. I'd like to know, besides hiring a consultant, what kind of thought process and what kind of percentages we're talking about for the people that are getting these raises? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Trainer, but we didn't hire a consultant, right? This was done in-house with our HR department. So, okay.
I'm not talking about if we hired a consultant.
No, no, I just wanted to correct that, because you said hired a consultant that came up with it. So anyways, and then Mr. Trainer can answer the rest of your question. Oh, Shawna, I'm sorry. I was looking for HR over there, so.
Yep. So, and I can have John Garrett jump in if he needs to here. But overall, we did, we had very specific parameters that we were comparing to other municipalities of the same size and same demographics for our city and our location. And then what we ended up doing was taking those pay ranges. And we actually made a range of 75% of that market, of the median market. We took 75% of that as our minimum range. So that's the very bottom. So whatever market industry standard was for that position, we're only doing 75% of that as the minimum. And so these positions are even below that minimum range.
Okay, I understand what you're telling me. I'm asking, when we look at this, what does that mean in percentages of increase for the average employee?
It depends on the position. So.
Okay. Yeah, I read a lot of them online. I'm asking, give me an average and a high and a low.
I would have to get back to.
Because it only has, it only has amounts per year. It doesn't tell me what that.
Right. And those percentages vary based on position, because even the amounts, right, are different based on their salary range. So I can definitely get that for you, but I don't have that handy for you right at the moment.
Okay. I'd like to know a high and a low that we're bracketing there, and what the average is.
Okay. I can definitely get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to bring this back up to the dais. And what would council like to do with this? I can't see. Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-004.
Okay, we have a motion. And is there a second? Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation from council? Councilmember?
I'm sorry, I just had a question. I might have missed that part.
Okay, well, since we have a motion on the floor, the question has to address the motion on the floor. If you do have a question, though, we can back up and we can withdraw the motion, if you'd like to do that, to get your question answered. Okay. Is that acceptable? Okay. All right. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, withdraw the motion? Withdraw the second? Okay, go ahead with your question.
I apologize. I just wanted clarification, just a couple of anomalies on the form, because most of them sort of track. Is on page two, third from the top, Police Officer One, that one's quite a bit more than the rest of them. And then, second from the bottom on page two, the Electric Meter Technician Apprentice. Is that a new position? Is that why that one's?
So, if Dan wants to speak to the Electric Meter Technician, I'm happy to let him do that. But this one is actually one that it has several different steps within it. So this is the overall increase between all of the steps. So, Dan, do you want to?
Sure.
So, a Police Officer One, you might have a 1A, 1B, 1C. Is that, no?
Well, no, not for a Police Officer. Police Officers should all be the same. And I think, I'm trying to remember what this one is. I'll have to look at that one, because those all should be the same. The recruit should be the only one that's different, but that is listed separately. As far as the Electric Meter Technician, though.
As part of our succession planning, we created this progression so that we could move someone into the Journey Level Electric Meter Technician, the individual who's in that position now. We anticipate could possibly retire this year. So we started the apprentice program so that we would have someone qualified to step into that position. We moved one of our existing meter technicians into that position, so there was no increase in full-time employees when we created that position. And the individual is currently at basically the second step, which would be Electric Meter Technician Apprentice One. He's in his second six months. We anticipate that he will complete that in March, and he will move then to the Electric Meter Technician Apprentice Two, which is the second year. And he will be in a position to then step into the Electric Journey Electric Meter Entry Position when our current Journey Electric Meter Technician retires. And once again, that was no new full-time employees, same number of employees, just kind of some reclassification to ensure that we had appropriate succession planning. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Okay. And as far as the Police Officer One, that one is an anomaly, because that is a brand-new police officer that was hired right at the end of the year. And so initially, what his hourly rate and annual salary was put in at was the old 2024 rate before even the 3% merit increase that was included in the budget. So this is to bring him up in line with all of the rest of the Police Officer One positions, because he was put in at the old 2024 rate, needs the 3% merit, and then also this pay plan minimum adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. No, that's okay. I'm glad, I'd rather back up and take the time to get it answered now. So, all right. Any other questions from anybody appearing in council? Okay. Now, what would council, go ahead, Mr. Hinton?
Yeah, I'd like to make a resolution to, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-004.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item 9C, First Reading of Ordinance 1809, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17.02, Applicability, Construction, and Enforcement, more specifically Section 17.02.050, Enforcement of the Fountain Municipal Code to Add Language Regarding City Approvals. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening, Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. This is going to be one of many ordinances that will be brought forth before City Council this year to address amendments to Titles 16 and Titles 17 of the municipal code pertaining primarily to zoning and subdivisions. With each legislative session up at the state level, it does trickle down to amendments at the local level. So throughout the next few months, we'll be bringing forth various amendments that addresses some of the legislative actions from the state that affect us, that we need to amend our codes. But without that, in addition to that, we've been working with past city attorneys and assistant city attorneys to review all of our codes and ordinances, make sure they are consistent through titles, that we don't have one title that says one thing that then contradicts another. Assistant City Attorney Grace Williams was working with the Police Department and zoning to address some of the enforcement actions, and noticed that there were some inconsistencies with language within those sections. This ordinance tonight is to address the applicability and construction and enforcement, to address some of the streamlining when it comes to issuance of building permits, certificates of occupancies, and to ensure that payment of fees and other conditions associated with applications are enforced as they move through the land use review process. Oftentimes, for an example, CDOT may require an access permit if they are gaining access to Highway 85 or Mesa Ridge. So we need to make sure that the applicant is following through with the outside agency requirements as well. So the verbiage being brought forth tonight is to ensure that the enforcement language with the noncompliance or potential noncompliance is addressed within our code. When the code was comprehensively updated in 2020, this section was previously in the code, and as it got transferred over, it was somehow taken out. So we're just trying to correct the wrong at that point. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, so any questions from council members for staff? Councilmember Rick?
So, I want to be clear on this. This code says that if you have a business in town, and you have not paid all of your taxes, all of your fees, et cetera, and you come back and instead of paying them, you want to start a second business, we can deny that second business until you pay everything you owe on your first business.
To the city.
To the city.
So it wouldn't imply anybody, if they are owed back taxes on federal or state, that there is anything due to the city. For example, if there was a special assessment that was assessed to their property taxes that was due to the city, due to any type of lien or past non-payment of fees, then we could collect that and withhold future applications until that has been rectified.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all clear on that. Because we have, in the past, had people who have not paid their fees, started a new business, and then just closed the other one, closed the first one, and said, too bad, so sad, I'm out of business, have a nice day. We're trying to cut back on that.
Correct.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions? Online? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to bring it back up here to the dais. What would council like to do with this? Councilmember Duncan?
Motion to approve Ordinance 1809 on first reading.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay. That takes us on to item 9D, Water Rate Study and Proposed Water Rate Increase and Public Input. Mr. Blankenship, and before we get started on this, so, give me just a second. Okay, how many people in the room, when Mr. Blankenship has finished with his presentation, might want to say something, just might. You can change your mind later, you know, but, so we have one person in the room, two, and then I have the card from this young lady up here, too. Okay, so I have three. How many, and if you're online and you might want to say something, okay, I'm just trying to get kind of an idea. And if it's not a commitment, I'm just trying to get an idea about how much time. And then if you're online and you think you might want to say something online, if you could raise your hand, because we want to make sure if you're online, we don't accidentally skip you. If you could just raise your hand really quick. You're not, you're not ready to talk. You're just raising your hand that you might want to talk. Okay. All right, online. Nobody online raising their hand? Okay. Okay. All righty. So before we, Mr. Blankenship is going to do his presentation, and then before we open it up to the public comment and the discussion, I want people to remember that you're here to address your questions or comments to the council as a whole, to address your questions or comments about the rate study. Each person will have one chance to speak, and your time cannot be shared with another person. If you have any handouts for the council, please pass them to staff over there, then raise your hand, chief or somebody, and they will get them to the council. We want to give citizens a chance for input, so staff will be taking notes of questions, and at the end, they will have time to respond. Some questions might be able to be answered tonight, and others, they may need to get back with you. So please make sure you've signed in in the back with contact information if you want them to respond back to you. So, Mr. Blankenship is going to do his presentation first, and then when he's done, we'll have time for council to ask any questions or clarifications. And then we will open it up to the public, and everyone will have their five minutes to use their time. But like I said, remember, you can't cede it to the next person. Okay, Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just want to let everyone know that on the back table back here, I've put a stack of copies of the presentation that I'm making. There's also copies of our Water Fund Stabilization Plan and copies of the most recent credit rating report. Those are all, those are documents that I'll reference tonight, and I think are important background information to. background information to help you understand where we are financially and where we're headed. I'm going to start by laying the groundwork for tonight's discussion. As the mayor indicated, we're here to receive public input, but I want to provide, I think, some critical and important information that is necessary to help everyone understand where we're at and the direction that we are headed. I'm going to start out with some backgrounds, some basic background information on how our utilities are structured and how our utilities are financed. And I have control, Chris, so I think I'm in good shape. Thank you. Tonight's story begins in 2002, when the City of Fountain created what's called the City of Fountain Electric Water and Wastewater Utility Enterprise. And the key word there is enterprise. And there's a couple of aspects that are important to know about what is an enterprise. And an enterprise is defined in the Colorado Constitution as a municipally or a government-owned business. And so our utilities, what that tells me is that our utilities, although they are owned by the government, they are a business, and they should be operated like a business. And that is, that is how I approach the operation and management of our water and our electric utilities. The other aspect of an enterprise that is important to know is that they are financially separate. That means they're independent of each other, and they're independent of the city's general fund. Although the Utilities Department is an operational department of the city, I report to the city manager. We get our checks through the City of Fountain, but the utility revenues and expenses are segregated from, they're segregated from each other, and they're segregated from the city's general revenues and expenses. The city has three primary accounting funds. The general fund, which is primarily funded by sales and property taxes, and those monies are used to pay for general government services such as police, fire, roads, parks. The second fund is the electric fund, and that is primarily, the primary source of revenue there is rates, and that pays for the operation and maintenance of the electric utility. And then the third fund is the water fund. Again, that's a utility fund. It is paid for by water rates, and those water rates are used to pay for the operation and maintenance of the water utility. Again, I can't overemphasize the point that these revenues and expenses for each of these funds are accounted for and reported separately. Now, I'll specifically talk about the water fund. The water fund's primary source of revenue is metered sales. And what I'm presenting this evening, the numbers that I'm presenting this evening are from the calendar year, fiscal year 2023. And the reason that I'm using 2023 numbers, those are the most recent audited accounting numbers that we have. We completed 2024 about a month ago, but from an accounting perspective, we actually don't close that year out until the middle of next month, and then it probably won't be until the middle of this year until I have audited official numbers for 2024. So I will use what I have as official audited numbers, and that's 2023. In 2023, we received $9.8 million from rates. That was the lowest amount since 2019. And the primary contributing factor to that being low last year was that we had a wet spring. And so that, we saw a considerable dip in, in revenues. This year, we rebounded. The unofficial numbers have come in, and we're a little bit more than a half a million dollars above what we did last year. However, this year, our consumption was still below the five-year average. In addition to rates or metered sales, we get revenue through connection charges, that's new taps, and that amount was, as you can see, a little over a million and a half in 2023. But we have a limited amount of water capacity for new development, so that number has been declining, and we anticipate that it will continue to, to decline. Miscellaneous revenues in 2023, we had reimbursements from the United States Air Force. They paid for the design and construction of a water treatment plant at Auga Park, and so a good portion of those miscellaneous revenues was reimbursement. We, where they reimbursed us for those, those costs. The General Improvement District, number two, that is a district that was formed a number of years ago, and a portion of its revenues are dedicated to the water fund. So there was multiple years that had not been transferred, that were transferred in 2023. So we anticipate that the annual amount going forward will be considerably less. We do charge a variety of fees, and then we had some pretty decent investment interest in 2023, and I think as we all are experiencing, we're seeing those interest rates come down a little bit. And then the last item on there is grants. And usually, when we get a grant, it's equivalent to the, the cost, so it's, it's kind of a wash. So it doesn't really contribute to the bottom line, it just offsets the expenses that are associated with that grant. And as I, as I indicated, you know, we, we fully anticipate that our connection charge, our miscellaneous revenues, and our grants are projected to be less in the coming years. And what that does is it puts more, it relies more on the metered sales to meet the revenue requirements of the utility. On the other side of the balance sheet are expenditures, and the water fund has seven primary categories of expenditures. These are listed in descending order from the most to the least. As you can see, the number one expenditure for the water utility is debt. We have a significant amount of debt. It was primarily to obtain water resources that we have now that are serving our community. I'm very pleased to report that we have adequate water resources to meet the needs of our existing community. In fact, we have storage in Pueblo Reservoir that's equivalent to about three years' worth of storage. So unlike many communities that have to do rationing or mandatory conservation, we are not in a position where it is, it would have to be an extreme event in which we would have to do mandatory rationing or mandatory conservation. But that comes at a price. Our source of supply, we are part of the Fountain Valley Authority. That means about, depending on the time of the year, 80 to 90% of our water comes from Pueblo Reservoir through a pipeline up the west side of I-25 into a treatment plant near Nixon Power Plant. There's five entities that are part of that authority. We are one, and so about 20, just less than 23% of our expenses go to the cost to supply the water. So right out of the chute, more than 53% of our expenses go to debt and acquiring the water that we put into our system. So we have very little to no control over those expenses. The next one on there is operation and maintenance. That's the personnel, materials, and supplies that is necessary to maintain and operate our water system. The next item is administration and support services. The utilities receive support services from the general government, things like finance, HR, tech services, IT, legal, fleet, and administration. And so because those services support the provision of, of utility service, then we as a utility reimburse the general fund for the cost of providing those services. The next one on the list is billing and collections. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's our customer service division. Capital improvements is improvements to the existing system that are necessary to ensure that we maintain reliability and meet the water quality standards. The seventh category is called a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes to general fund. All utilities that operate within the City of Fountain and any municipality pay a franchise tax. Because we are a municipally-owned utility, we pay what's called a payment in lieu of those franchise taxes. Now, you can see in 2023 that that number was zero. The city code stipulates that that amount should be 5% of metered sales, but it has been waived as part of the Water Fund Stabilization Plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about the Water Fund Stabilization Plan in just a minute. In fact, I'm going to talk about it right now. Periodically, over a period of many years, the water fund has relied upon loans from the electric fund to balance the books on an end, on, at the end of the year. The, the water rates were not adequate to meet the revenue requirements of the utility, and so, or the actual amount of water sold was less than projected for a variety of reasons. Going back many, many years, there had to be loans, inter-fund loans, from the electric fund to the water fund to balance the books. As of 2023, that inter-fund loan balance was just slightly over $4 million. And that acronym that I have there is the Annual Certified Financial Report is the source of, of that number. So in March of last year, the City of Fountain City Council passed a resolution to establish the Water Fund Stabilization Plan. And that stabilization plan will eliminate the water fund's inter-fund loan from the electric fund and establish an operating and maintenance reserve. Currently, we do not have an operating and maintenance reserve in our water fund. And again, there's a copy of the, the Water Fund Stabilization Plan in the back, but I do want to read to you some of the actions that were put into, into place. As part of the Water Fund Stabilization Plan, the, the PILT for electric was eliminated in 2024, and the reason why the, the payment in lieu of taxes in the electric fund was eliminated is because our bonding and loan obligations are based on the combined utility. So by improving the fund status of the electric fund improves the overall status of the financial status of the, of the combined utility, and we needed to do that to ensure that we maintain compliance with our bonding and loan requirements. The, the PILT or the water fund was transferred into, transferred back, previous payments for '23 and '24 that were budgeted were moved into the water fund. There was a refund to the water fund based on a cost allocation study that allocates the cost of those support funds or support services that I mentioned that are provided. In fact, the total refund in 2023 to the utilities was just slightly over $1 million, with about $570,000 of that going back into the water fund. So there was a, a number of actions that were taken in which the general fund contributed to, to the benefit of stabilizing our water fund. One of the primary indicators of the utilities' performance, and probably the number one key performance financial indicator, is our financial scorecard or our credit rating. We have credit rating that's done by a international credit rating firm. There's three of them that are, that do all of the credit rating for the issuance of bonds, and investors throughout the world rely upon these credit ratings. Our credit rating is done by S&amp;P Global. As a recent history, in October of '21, our combined utility rating was downgraded. It went from an A to an A minus, and it was primarily due to what they call a weak cash position or liquidity, and that's a lack of reserves. We have reserves in our electric fund. We do not have reserves in our water fund. And then also, the, we have what they consider to be a low revenue to debt ratio. In May 2024, we had a update of that rating, and we remained at A-, which was quite frankly, a little bit of a surprise to me, because based on my knowledge of our financial situation, especially in the water fund, I was anticipating another downgrade. I was very pleased to learn that they did not downgrade us, that they had acknowledged that we had increased our combined liquidity or, or reserve from 27 days to 67 days of O&M reserve. I would tell you that the absolute minimum industry standard is 90 days. But they increased the, the liquidity, they attributed the increased liquidity to primarily three things. Significant cost control management measures resulting in reductions in O&M expenses, reduced capital project expenses, and implementation of the cost allocation study resulting in reduced expenses. The cost control measures were something that, that I put into place in 2020. After I'd been here about five months, I recognized that the projected expenses for the 2020 fiscal year were going to exceed the projected revenues. And so I put out a directive to all staff that all, all expenditures in the water fund were only those that are necessary to ensure reliable service and ensure water quality standards, and that that directive was to remain in place until further notice. Further notice has, we have not reached further notice. So it's, it's basically a new culture that we've established in, in the utility. So as far as the outlook goes on our credit rating, S&amp;P has acknowledged the things that we are doing, and they anticipate that we will continue to do those things like managing and controlling our expenses. And they, but they specifically note that they could raise or increase our, our rating so we would get a higher rating if our cash position improves considerably. Unfortunately, in order to do that, it requires rate increases. If we, if no changes are made, it's likely that the S&amp;P will lower our credit rating. So the number one, and the number one step in making ends meet, so to speak, is managing costs. Cost management measures, from my perspective, include increasing efficiency of operations, elimination of unnecessary expenses, and closely monitoring all expenses. I could not, I cannot recommend that we consider a rate increase without first managing our costs. To, to show you what we've done over the period from 2020 through 2023, our actual operation and maintenance expenses in 2020 were $2.68 million. From the period of 2020 through 2023, we experienced 20% inflation, and that's based on the Regional Consumer Price Index. So if we would have just continued basically to spin in a flat line based on our 2020 expenses with inflation, that would have increased our costs in 2023 to $3.22 million. And that's And that's just to cover inflation. However, based on our cost management, our cost management measures, our actual cost, O&M expenses in 2023 were $2.33 million, less than our actual expenses in 2020. And when you adjust those expenses for inflation, it's $885,000 less than in the inflation numbers. In addition to the $885,000, we, the reallocation study saved the Water Fund $573,000 for a total expense reduction from 2020 to 2023 of $1.46 million. So how much does a gallon of drinking water cost in Fountain? The average customer currently pays about 1.2 cents to purchase a gallon of drinking water. The average customer uses about 5,100 gallons a month. And based on our current rate structure, that 5,100 gallons costs them 1.2 cents per gallon to purchase. If the proposed rate structure is ultimately implemented, the average cost the customer will pay will be about 1.8 cents to purchase that gallon of water at the end of the five-year study period. So now I'll get into the Water Cost of Service and Rate Design Study for what we're here to talk about. The Water Fund Stabilization Plan included the requirement to do a cost of service and rate design study to evaluate the cost of providing water service for the next three to five years. We needed to have a clear understanding of what our anticipated costs are to provide this service. Staff requested proposals and we received seven proposals. The firm of utility accounting and rate specialists submitted the most cost-effective proposal that met or exceeded all of the minimum qualifications. The proposals ranged from $30,000 to $60,000. The firm that we selected, the most qualified firm that we selected, was at the bottom of that cost range. One of the things that this firm also provided to us was a rate model. In the past, all we have received is a rate report. With the rate model, our staff can now utilize that model and update that model on an annual basis to make adjustments. So if we perform better, if our actual performance is better than what we anticipate, then we can adjust the rates accordingly. And we do not have to go back to the consultant and pay more money to have that analysis done. The rate study was completed in November and presented to the City Council in December. A key part of a rate study, because some of it is, some of it's accounting and some of it's science, but some of it needs to be directed by objectives. And so we provided to the rate consultant specific objectives when they started to do the study. Here we have four of the primary objectives that were identified. One is the Water Fund shall be self-supporting. No more can, no more inter-fund loans and having a, the required O&M reserve. The rates shall be designed to encourage efficient water use. We have a limited commodity. Yes, we have plenty of water to serve our existing community, but that doesn't mean that we should, we should waste that commodity. And it's important that we charge our customers in an equitable manner based on their use, again, to create a minimum reserve of no less than three months of O&M expenses. And that the really important part here too is that the rate shall not include any costs associated with system capacity enhancements or system extensions that may be needed to accommodate new or future growth. This is an approach that the council has endorsed, is that growth pays its own way. We are not, there is nothing in our rate structure that would result in an existing customer paying for any type of improvement that would benefit growth or anyone else other than our existing customers. Some of the things to know as we dive into this, the last water rate increase occurred five years ago in March of 2020. I've heard a lot of people say, well, why, why did you wait so long? Well, I can tell you that you're listening to the reason why we waited so long. In September of 2020, I sent an email to the council and advised them that I had decided not to proceed with the water study at that time for multiple reasons. At that time, we had just increased rates at the beginning of that year. We had just had a water study less than 18 months prior to that. And we were in the process of assessing the status of the Water Fund and the status of our operations. And then we had already completed an electric cost of service study and we had electric rate increases proposed. It was my hope that we could find the financial resources to meet the needs of the existing system so that only future rate increases would be based on cost inflation. Unfortunately, that isn't what we discovered or where we're at at this point in time. And I was also not very comfortable with the cost proposal for the rate study because it was more than twice of what the electric rate study cost. As I mentioned, the cost management measures taken by the utilities from 2020 through 2023 have resulted in a significant reduction in annual expenses. Those, the reduction of those expenses is, was through cost efficiency and strict cost management measures that remain in place and will continue to ensure that we are providing services in the most cost-effective manner that we possibly can. We are, we are shackled with a significant amount of debt, but we do reap the benefit of that debt by having the adequate water supply that we have for our community. And we were looking at about $3.5 million of annual debt payments through 2027 before they start to diminish. And debt is not completely paid off until 2042, I believe. So we have a long ways to go on that. And another point, I think, to keep in mind is that for the average residential customer, like I say, they, they used about 5,100 gallons. 97% of our customers are residential customers. And so the customers that use about, that use... 6,000, thank you Brett. Use 6,000 gallons a month will pay $6.50 a month in the first year. And the last time I was at the coffee shop, that's about the same price as a medium-sized coffee drink. For the five-year period, we have projected the revenue requirements for the water system. And they're listed here. 2027, you see a larger number because that includes $1 million for a, for a water tank rehab project that we need to, we need to do to ensure that we maintain reliability. The, I think the takeaway on this slide is, is that our costs, because of our cost management measures, we're looking at less than a 10% increase in costs over a five-year period. And we are taking into consideration a moderate inflation in that. So I've identified for the, for the council, rate alternatives. And they're, they're listed here. We can consider rate adjustments one year at a time using the rate study as a basis. We currently do our budgeting two years at a time. And so we can consider a two-year rate adjustment to coincide with the two-year budget using the rate study as a basis. I would tell you that that is my inclination at this time, but I'm not making a recommendation and will not be making a recommendation probably until the second meeting in February. The third alternative is to consider the full five-year rate plan using the rate study as a basis. And then consider an alternative plan that does not necessarily use the rate study as a basis if there is some other basis. And the last alternative is to take no action and continue with the existing rates. If we do take action, whatever, whatever alternative we take, each alternative includes an annual review by the council and possible rate adjustment recommendations if warranted. As I mentioned earlier, we do have the water rate model. We will, at the end of each fiscal year, when we get the certified financials, we will input that, those actual numbers and reevaluate the revenue requirements and the rates that are associated with that. And then we would come back to the council and to the public and report those findings. And we would anticipate that the first review would take place in the third quarter of 2026 using the 2025 audited financials. Consequences for underfunding or not meeting the revenue requirements. If, if we do not meet the revenue requirements of our utility, we will have insufficient maintenance resulting in diminishing reliability, which will lead to more frequent and larger failures in the system. I think these are pretty obvious. We would, we would not be in compliance with our financial policies, our loan bond obligations, and we would have adverse impact to our bond and credit rating. The annual inter-fund loans from the Electric Fund would need to continue, which adversely impacts the Electric Fund and the electric consumers. A fact that is, I think is important to know is that currently the City of Fountain has about 8,850 combined water and electric customers. That means they receive water and electric services from the City of Fountain. And there are 10,500 electric-only customers. That means they only receive electricity services for, from the City of Fountain. So by, by having a large inter-fund loan from the electric to the water, those 10,500 customers, their, their funds are being used to basically support the Water Fund even though they receive no benefit from the Water Fund. I just want to, I want to say that this, this isn't a want. This isn't an ask. Based on my professional opinion, this is a necessity to ensure the sustainability of our community's water system. The rates that are needed to meet our rate revenues are shown here. As I indicated earlier, the first year for the approximately average customer will be $6.44. And you can see that it continues to increase over the five-year plan period. This is in, in the presentation, which there are hard copies in the back. So with that, I'll entertain questions or comments. I do want to state that, that the first, the plan, the continued moving forward plan is at the first meeting in February to continue to solicit public input. We plan to do a first reading of an ordinance to repeal the existing rates. The existing rates have to be repealed in, in order to enable new rates to be put in place. But it takes two actions by the council to do that. So the first reading of the ordinance to repeal current rates does not put anything into action. It just enables the council to take action. Then at the second meeting in February, I will make a recommendation. There will be discussion and possible action on rates. If new rates are approved, then the second reading of the ordinance to repeal the current rates will also be heard at that meeting. If there is no action on new rates, then the second reading of the ordinance to repeal will not occur. So there will be no real formal action on new rates no sooner than the second meeting in February. And that concludes my presentation this evening. And I appreciate you all bearing with me to cover a lot of territory.
Thank you very much. It's a lot of information. And so, and we're at 7:15 or 7:17. So we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break at this point because I don't want to have to take a comfort break while we have public comment time going on. I don't want to interrupt that flow. So I'm at 7:18. Let's just make it easy and round it back. We will, we will come back from our break at 7:30. Okay, that's 12 minutes, not 10 minutes. So we're going to go ahead and take a quick comfort break. And again, if you want to look over the numbers and slides, hopefully there's still somewhere left at the back. They'll give you a few minutes to look those over too. All right, so we will be back in 7:30. All right, so we will be back in 7:30.
That said, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. And remind, do we have the clock working? Because I know we're having some trouble. I understand it's not streaming right now since we took the intermission. It's not wanting to go. And he's trying to reboot it. The sound is recording for the minutes, but the camera system seems to be out. Okay, so Fred, you're going to, you'll set yours and you'll set yours and between it, everybody. Okay, so you do have five minutes. Like we said, you can't cede your time to the next person. So you're welcome to line up or just jump up. But we, okay, we got somebody. So does that mean we're not going to be able to make comments if anyone's online wanting to make a comment until he gets us rebooted? We have no one online? Okay, all righty. Okay, so please come down and state your name for the record. And I'm sorry, we can't have a timer up there, but we will be timing you up here. And when you stop, the timer will start, restart again. So state your name for the record, please.
Hit that middle, hit that middle button.
Hit the middle button to get them, there you go. Great.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Perongo. And may I begin?
You're fine, keep going, yes.
So my colleagues and I have come today to beseech the council to avoid offloading this utility debt on the households. The proposed price hike will have a negative effect on Fountain residents' budgets, and the city should consider alternate, explore alternate avenues of funding for the municipal utility enterprise and present them at the next meeting. As it is now, Fountain enjoys a relatively low cost of living, which is a major point of attraction for young people looking for a place to live. While the proposed rate increase of 10% is not particularly onerous from the outset, inflation will continue and rent will rise. By the last year, the increase will total an average of $428 for residents, as we saw in the presentation. This rate may also be revised upwards, I've seen in the presentation, and the rent in this city has increased by more than 22% in two years. We've also been told to expect an electric bill rate hike. Now, businesses that operate using significant amounts of these utilities will look at this as an additional tax on their operations and may begin to look elsewhere. I appeal to City Council to seek alternative sources of funding inside or outside the water fund. There was talk of finding other avenues of funding or cost cutting within the water fund that were considered unviable, but little detail was provided on this. Could this fiscal crisis due to investment incurred debt have been preempted? What alternative sources of revenue have been explored by the city to contribute to the water fund? Additionally, has there been any follow-up to the Colorado School of Public Health survey which sought to determine a connection between forever chemicals in drinking water and negative health consequences? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person? Please come down and state your name for the record and push that middle button. We can just leave the mic on, everybody, from person to person, I think. So, and let's restart your timers, please. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, City Council, Dan. First off, I'd like to say, Dan, outstanding presentation.
Could you state your name for the record?
My apologies. Michael Browder, Fountain resident.
Thank you.
I want to give kudos where kudos deserve. Cost management and cost reduction, what you did to try to get us down to where we needed to be. If that's not recognized at the beginning, then we're failing you at the outstanding job you have tried to do to not pass this cost on to the consumers. The fact is, Councilwoman Estes stated, about every 20 years, we end up having to do one of these, these cost hikes. So this isn't inevitability, and if we, if we do what we need to, to fix the problem, and then put a continuous fix, a 1% annual rate increase that will be evaluated to see if that's really necessary, but to keep us up with inflation, to keep us up with utilities, to keep us to where in 20 years, we've already made that 20% hike, and we don't have to go through this Band-Aid, hair pain of doing cost hikes. It really could, so outstanding job. Did you just tattle on the electric fund? We borrowed $4 million from the electric fund and it's operating okay. When we pay that back, can we expect to see some refunds come out of the electric fund if we're overpaying to that? Question, I don't expect any answer to that, it just seems like you kind of tattled on it. I do not like the one year, because we, the people, hate change. So even if you voted in, we're not going to like it, we're not going to be acceptance of it, but we'll do what we have to. Next year, this room is going to be twice as full, and we'll never get to the two-year part of fixing the problem. We have to fix the problem. The five-year plan that you show, I love the online presentation, I was disappointed to see the bar graphs gone, because it shows by year four, we are breaking even. We're pulling in what we need to, we're not making any revenue, we don't have the overage that we need, but we're going to be finally at a point where what we spend equals what we're making. I agree with Dan, the two-year plan makes the most sense. We have to fix this now, we have to rip the Band-Aid off. These costs aren't just going to go away, this is the new now. So start small-ish, you know, do that 10% this year, another 10% next year, and then reevaluate and go smaller. What is the six-to-10-year plan? What do we look like after two years? Can we do smaller hikes and maybe span getting healthy out to seven instead of five years? Our rates are going to look better, we're still going to get a kudos from S&amp;P, we're going to get our A- to stay. It's not optimal, but I bet you're not going to get interest rates lower than you got in 2021. So, you know, we got to keep our rating, and then in the seven-year, 10-year plan, look for that A-plus rating. That's all I have.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sandy, I filled out the card.
Yes.
And I moved here because it was like a lower cost of living, if I'm being honest, and I voted for you guys, so, because I believe in you guys. So, and I do love living here, but I did have questions that somewhat felt brushed over in, like in the presentation, about the water pollution and how that was getting paid for. Obviously, I know the bases were covering that. Are we getting reimbursed for that? Are we, or are we paying them back? Because I thought if they caused the problem, they'd be paying for it, you know?
So they'll answer questions at the end?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that was a concern. Another one is if we're releasing a new report for the, the health effects of these water pollutions, you know, like the PFAs, I know it happened a year ago, so I'm wondering when the next one is coming out. Those are pretty much most of my concerns. I did appreciate the presentation and the hard work, and I voted for you, so I hope things work out for us. Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, next person, please. Please come down and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Connie Weisenhund. So I just want to start off by just comments in regards to always being reminded that this is an enterprise, a government-owned business. And with that being said, I hope that we never lose the lack of empathy for the citizens of Fountain, which are the customers. Also wanted to just state that the bill for the utilities has the electricity and the water on it, so I wonder if the resources will be the same for the people? Because before we had the cold spell, we had 84 Fountain residents who had their utilities shut off again. So it just seems to be something going on in regards to, can we hold off on the utility disconnect during the months of March, October to March? I think that would help citizens understand that the rate increase is just the price of a cup of coffee. Not everybody is having coffee at Starbucks, just wanted to let you all know. Also wanted to say, doesn't all of the new build help us out here in Fountain? All of the new homes coming in, does that help us out in regards to expenses? And then I would also like to just ask, being that we just had a lot of recent, sorry, our taxes were increased for our homes, we talked about utility tax increase, we've got our employees, our servants, who need to be maintained at a level comparable with other people throughout the cities in their positions. So we've got a lot of increases, but we just had some increases, and I just think that not everybody's comprehending them totally. And then the last thing I guess I'd like to say is that in regards to the, the A- that we recently got, and we were at an A, I just wondered if, well, I lost my note on it, but I just think that there's some things that are being left out in regards to this increase that aren't completely being tapped on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got to get the clocks synchronized, okay. All right, so we're back online again? Okay, I'm going to keep going with the people in the room unless you let me know there's someone online, okay? With a hand raised. If you're online, raise your hand so we can get you called on, okay? All righty, anybody else in the room that would like to come down and make a public Please come down, the microphone, and state your name for the record.
Al Lender. Thank you for your little note that I got today, Mrs. Thompson, from you. I'm grateful that we have some people here, because normally, nobody shows up. So it goes to show that there is some interest, and I took note to it, what they had to say. But I was here back in the year of 2000, 2003, when we were talking about the Southern delivery system. At the time, I didn't like it, I don't like growth, as you all know, and I thought it was going to be a very, very, very costly operation, which it has turned into. Thank you for your comments, you're right on. I'm going to say this, I, over the past few months, this has really bothered me. I've been on top of Gordon Rick about it. I asked for a presentation, Dan was there to sit down with me for an hour of his time, and he explained all this to me. And I was in shock when I heard $47 million that we were in debt, and that it was going to be $3.5 million a year in interest. I just could not believe this, and I, I didn't know of it. Anyways, I went and I sat down with Dan, and we went over things, and I saw where it was coming from, because I'm the one that always thinks that you guys are sneaky and go around the bushes and so forth, but this time, that's not true. What Dan has explained tonight, I am 110% behind him, and whatever he recommends, I think you should seriously take into consideration. When I first heard the five-year plan, it bothered me a little bit. I, as you know, you know, have large acre lots up there, I recently put some cows out there, I have to give them a lot of water. I believe in having a nice green lawn, so in the summertime, I have one heck of a bill. And I looked at this, and I said to myself, wow, this is really going to cost me a lot of money. But after hearing everything about this, today I had a big discussion with Scott Traynor. I am completely for whatever Dan Blanketship says here. He's a true professional, and he's looking out for the best interest of this community.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to make comments? Are there any other citizens that would like to make comments? Do we have any hands up online? Okay. This is, this is your time, and we've, we've really slowed this down. I know Mr. Blank, okay, come on down. Mr. Blankenship, you wanted us to have this ordinance tonight, and we slowed it down, and I said, no, I want this to be a citizen discussion time, to have citizens' time to get in here, and not only had come to the work session when you presented it, because it's a lot of information, it's a lot of stuff to understand, but we slowed it down tonight to get as much community input as we can. And so please state your name for the record.
Hello. My name is Anya Whitaker, and thank you to everybody who put all that hard work in to try to explain to us, you know, what is going on and what kind of consequences we're facing, because that was one of my big questions after December, when this was first introduced. So my thoughts, I just wanted to make a comment, I guess, about those rate alternatives. Like the gentleman before me was speaking. I feel too that whatever sort of maybe system is decided upon on how to get that fund for the water, the water fund refilled properly even for the emergencies, it should be something that is in the get-go, put in place, and not be reconsidered on any one-year or two-year basis, because then we will have made progress potentially at some point, but we'll find ourselves, because of some other emergency, having to stop and not getting to our goal. The other rate alternative is take no action and continuing with existing rates. I just wanted to say that leaves both of our utilities, electricity and water, vulnerable for whatever comes in the future. And although we all have, yeah, experience, you know, inflations and rate increases and fee increases and just increases in general, other than wage increases, which we would really like, everybody knows that if there is no emergency fund, and now your water heater breaks and/or now your car breaks down, you are in a vulnerable position, and I don't think we should leave our utilities in a vulnerable position. Okay? That's not good for any of us. So thanks. That's all.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Please come down and state your name for the record.
Sean Vierhoff. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. I was just going over the, the case study that I received from, from Dan, and it's quite, I had a lot of information there as well. I would like to propose with this that, that maybe with the rate increase, we maybe look at a possible sunset for the rate increase to review at that time to maybe see if, if this rate increase shouldn't remain permanent would be a possibility, as well as it's, after reviewing everything, it's, it's a really tough position for the water, for the water utility to be in because of the 30 bill, or 30, be with 30% of the budget with 44 or a million dollars of, of debt, that's a lot for the utility to, to maintain. So I think that it would be a good idea to continue to look at this, because this is definitely a tough issue when it looks at, when you look at the residents that are having a hard time paying their bills already, but I think that overall, I think this is a great job, Dan, and I appreciate the additional information for the, for this. So thank you.
Okay. Dan, the slides that you presented tonight will be online tonight, tomorrow?
Well, we'll have them online no later than tomorrow morning, but there are probably still some hard copies back there, but yes, we will get those posted online with a link from the main homepage.
And can, is there, can we get a banner, Mr. Trilch, across the top so people don't have to search all over to find it?
We'll put a banner up right across the top of the website right here very well.
Okay, so, all right, sometime tomorrow?
Good morning.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On that one that you're posting, is that going to have the one with the, Dan, the, the bar charts that, with the?
That is already on there.
That's already on?
Yeah. The, the full rate study was posted the, the morning after we had the presentation in December.
I think that's?
It's still there, yes. Yeah, if you dive into that, it's a lot of information, but it is, it paints a, a pretty compelling picture.
I want to make sure that doesn't disappear and make it hard to find. I want to make this stuff as easy to find for people.
Yep.
All righty. And if you have questions about the rate hike, Dan has an email. He is more than happy to answer email questions for you. Like I said, we're not taking any action tonight. This is just a discussion item on the agenda, and it will be, you stead the dates at the beginning, Dan. When is it, when are we bringing it back again?
We, our plan is to come back, the first meeting in February, to have, give the public another opportunity to, to, to share thoughts, comments, and ask questions. At that meeting, I will be bringing forward the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance to repeal the existing rates. That just, that does not take any formal action. What it does is it enables the, well, the council votes on it, so effectively it is a formal action, but it doesn't put any, it doesn't repeal the rates because it takes two readings to do so. So in order for us to be able to consider the, the rate increases at the second meeting in February, we would have to have had read the first or the ordinance to repeal the existing at the first meeting, and then if there is or a rate increase passed at the second meeting, then we'd also do the second reading to repeal the existing rates.
Okay. Councilmember Hursberg, you had a question?
I'm just a comment. First, Dan, I wanted to thank you for the presentation and just really recognize the commitment of time that you've made, not in just preparing it, but in spending one-on-one time. I know I spent an hour with you, I'm hearing other people spent one-on-one time with you, so you've really invested so much into this, and I just appreciate that. And I wanted to express how much I appreciate public comment, people showing up and expressing for, against, whatever. We just really appreciate your comment. It means so much, and please do come back.
Any other last comments from council, because otherwise I'm going to ask staff to see if they wanted to answer any of their questions tonight. Councilmember Duncan?
I just want to echo some of the comments that were made. I have spent an amount, a numerous amount of time with Dan, and I've never understood water as well as I have with my great teacher. And so, you know, not only does he explain it, he explained it, you know, to dummies. You know, if there was a manual, how to explain water to dummies, he would have a good, a book for us to read. So I appreciate all of the hard work that you have been doing since the day that we have selected you for hire. You have been a great asset to the Fountain community, and I really appreciate all of the hard work that you have done. You identified problems early on, and so it, it is not something that we are shocked about because we knew that there were problems. We just, we're trying to find the best way to solve them, and I thank you for all of the hard work that you have put into this and your service to our community and the customer service to our community, I really appreciate. So I encourage anyone that, if you have any questions or anything, please reach out. We'll put his name and phone number on, and so.
Deep Blankenship at Fountain Colorado.
So he'll, he, he will break it down where you understand, and I really appreciate all of the comments. I appreciate our young generation that's in the room that, you know, we, we have to watch our peonies too, so I appreciate you coming out. This is awesome that you're involved in the community, and we really appreciate you being here.
All right, any other councilmembers? Dan, I think after I met with you the first time and you explained this, and I picked my jaw up off the floor, my next words to you is, we need to change the way we do business, which is what you were presenting to us. And I think the way business has been done for a long time is water fund got low, borrowed from electric, electric got low, and we just borrowed back and forth to balance things out. And you came along and said, we're not going to do business that way anymore. We're in a different century. We're going to stabilize each fund independently. And, and that took some really rethinking from a lot of us because it has always been done that way for years. And nothing wrong with it, nothing nefarious about it, it's just the way it was done. And I looked at you and I said, well, we can't kick this can down the road any further, can we? And we need to figure out how to do this. And everybody up here has worked exceedingly hard, meeting with people, and, and thank you and your staff for taking all the hard questions we brought back, you know, back at you, and I really want to tell you that we really appreciate that. So that said, we had a lot of questions tonight. Dan or Scott, if you, Todd, anybody, if you feel comfortable answering some of them, we can take a few more minutes and answer them, or you can come back the next meeting. My, my fear is if we don't answer some of them, people won't come back to the next meeting, right?
I hope they do come back, but I will.
I hope so too.
I will, I will do, I will attempt to answer the questions that, that I noted. I, I first want to say thank you very much for the acknowledgement of all the work that's been put in, not only by myself, but I, I would be very remiss to not acknowledge my staff, who really does all the work. And Catherine Pukie, she is our budget analyst. She's the one who really does the heavy lifting when it comes to all the financial stuff. She's also been a huge contributor to our COWS management measures. She is the, the person who runs roughshod on that. If, if there's an expenditure, no matter how small or big, even just a few dollars, and it doesn't look right, she's on top of it. So a lot of the cost savings, even though that was the directive that I gave, she's the one who makes sure it's actually happening. Taylor Murphy, our Water Resources Manager, he, both he and Catherine worked with the, the rate consultant. Taylor is constantly challenging me and, and my thoughts, and he always has, you know, good ideas, and, and he looks at things from a little bit different perspective. He's a few generations behind me, so he brings forth some of the, I think, the ideas and, and thoughts that someone in his generation, how they look at things, and it's very, very beneficial to what we've done. Brett Robinson, our Customer Service Manager, he's been an integral part of this, and anytime we have any type of interface with customers, and, and he is right at the point of that, I expect him to be, and he, he's always very responsive. And then finally, Carl Christian, who couldn't be here tonight because he's there, he's having his sleep studied, I guess, and he's my, my right-hand person and is always there to also challenge me. That's one thing I encourage my staff to do, is to, to challenge me. But I am, I'm, I'm very fortunate to be part of this organization. I feel very blessed to be part of this organization. I am a member of this community. I live down the street from Councilmember Duncan. We're neighbors. So this, this impacts me not only professionally, but, but personally too. I drink the water, and I can tell you that I drink the water right out of the faucet. When my kids and my grandkids come and visit me, they drink the water right out of the faucet. I am 100% confident in the quality of the water that we provide to this community. I was at the stock show this weekend, and I ran across someone selling water purification systems, and the first thing she says is, well, where do you live? And I said Fountain. She goes, oh, their water. Fortunately, my wife did not want to see a battle royal, so she informed the person who she was talking to that, what my role with this community was, and that nipped the conversation in the bud really quick. So, all that said, I'll go ahead and try to address some of these, these comments and, and questions, and I, I think I got most of the first names right. I don't know if I got the last names right, but if you will indulge me, I'll just maybe use the, the first names. Benjamin, yeah. And as, as far as alternative means to fund our water utility, we, we are utilizing grants to the greatest extent we can, and we're, in fact, we're building a, a 30-inch pipeline from our water tower in the south into the main part of our community, about a $6 million project, 100% funded by grants. We're in the process of updating our meter reading system so that we can better manage our, our water use, our water accounting, 100% grants for that. We have property which can be converted into future water storage and water treatment. We have about a $2.3 million grant that we're using to do the design work. Now, we won't move forward with that project because that project would ultimately benefit new development, so we were not going to move forward with that unless we can get landowners or developers to step up and, and pay for those things. But so we're constantly, in fact, I have an individual on our staff, Katie Helm, who has been fantastic about obtaining grants and is constantly looking for alternative means to infuse money into our utility. We have a current, we're part of a current joint action or lawsuit. What's that? That's what it's called?
Class action.
Class action. I knew, yeah, there we go, class action. See, he's always, he's, his mind is much fresher than mine. We're part of a class action lawsuit against the manufacturers of PFAS, and we anticipate that there's a good opportunity that maybe even this year, we might see an influx in a, in a, in excess of a million dollars to our water fund. We will apply that as part of our revenue, and that'll be something that goes into when we update our, our actual numbers in the, in the rate model. So yes, we are constantly looking at alternative means to, to fund our water, but I can tell you that the primary source is unfortunately always going to be rates because it is a, it's a service and it's, it's, and then we, we work at recovering that cost from the, the cost of service. And, and you mentioned, I think, the forever chemicals. Yes, that is something, we have a water treatment plant to treat our groundwater for, for PFAS, and we, we passed a, a resolution that said we would treat to non-detect levels. The U.S. EPA has announced that they are going to regulate PFAS in water systems, and their, their maximum contaminant level, I think, is five parts per trillion. Is that right, Taylor? Four parts per trillion. There you go. And we have made the commitment to treat to non-detect, which is currently with the approved testing methods is about two parts per trillion. So we are very active in that area, and we have made that commitment to treat to those levels. There was another question that I think asked about the Air Force reimbursement. As long as our groundwater is above a, has contaminants above a certain level, they will reimburse us for our operational, portion of our operational costs. And we have been very aggressive and active in ensuring that we have maintained agreements with the Air Force so that they will continue to do that. They don't pay 100% of our costs, but they did pay 100% of the costs to build the treatment plant. We had to pay the cost for the building, but then we went and made a compelling argument to them that they should reimburse us for that, and that was, that the tail end of the reimbursement of the building happened in 2023, so that was why some of those miscellaneous expenses or miscellaneous revenues was a little bit higher. I, I, I can't tell you, Michael, I appreciate your insight. I appreciate your comments. You, you get it, at least from my perspective, you get it. I think, is it Sandy? Okay. And you, you inquired about the PFAS and the health effects. We, we also do a, a water quality report that comes out?
Um, July timeframe.
In, in approximately the July timeframe. I can tell you that if we have any violations, we are required by the state to notify, even if those violations occur throughout the year. We haven't not had any violations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And so, but we will have a full, extensive report in, in, in July, but if we do have a, a unexpected violation of the standards, we will send out notification on that. But that's one of the things, really the, the two things that are, when it comes to the operation of our water system, that are of paramount importance to, to our department, to our, our staff, is the water quality and the reliability of the system. So those are the two things that we constantly have our crosshairs on, except for Catherine. You're still here, yeah. She's, she's constantly looking at the money and where it's coming and going from. Connie, I would, I would like to say that, you know, I, I really emphasize the enterprise aspect. Connie, I would like to say that, you know, I really emphasize the enterprise aspect of it so people would understand that the utilities are separate from the city. I think there's some perception or some lack of knowledge that it all, it's all mixed together. And my intent in emphasizing that was just to, from a financial perspective. I would say that as far as empathy goes, we are very empathetic. That's a value that is very important to me. Is Brett still here? Brett, Brett will, you know, he will confirm that that's something that I constantly reinforce when talking with our customer service staff and expect. But we still have to, we have to balance, you know, we have to balance that with our obligation to run the business. We are looking at how we can do differently with the cutoffs during the winter time. But unfortunately, we still have a group of people that, you know, I wish, I wish that we could just, if we could identify the people that were truly in need and the people who are gaming the system. And the ones who are truly in need, we would help every day, anytime. But the ones who are gaming the system are hurting everybody else by gaming the system. So we've got to somehow draw a balance in there. And we do that through compassion reconnects. And in fact, during the last cold spell, I think we only ended up, was it six or eight, Brett? Eight that ended up disconnected through the cold spell. But those are folks that had maybe even abandoned, that weren't going to pay. And then we spend a lot of money then chasing them down, trying to get them to pay. And all that goes into our revenue requirements. So we, you know, we have, we just, we, it's a difficult thing, but we definitely, you know, try to balance, to balance that. And you asked about new customer impact. The new customers do impact, but we're not, you know, it may seem like we're growing really fast, but I wish Kristi Martinez was still here, she could tell us. I think maybe last year, Taylor, do you know, did we have 40 new house connections or?
Forty-three.
Forty-three new house connections. That's not a whole lot. And that's, and there's also development that occurs within the community that's served by wide field, water, and sand districts, so not all of them do contribute. Now, that said, a couple of years ago, the interfund debt from the electric, from the water to electric was at, in 2020, was at 8.7 million. You heard me today say that we're around 4 million. A big contributor to that reduction was a subdivision that pre-purchased their taps and paid like $3.9 million. And that money was used to reduce that interfund payable. So we are using, you know, new customers' money to pay this down. Where's Al? He left? I was going to go give him a hug. I'm like, and I did, you know, it was a great opportunity. I appreciate that he reached out to me. And, yeah, it kind of blew his hair back when I went through this. And I actually probably think we spent about an hour and a half together, but he had such a great time, he only thought it was an hour. But like I said, next time I see him, I think I'll give him a hug. And is it Anya?
Anya.
Anya, okay. And I think you get it, I mean, I thank you for your comments, and I think you definitely get it too. You really boiled it down when you said, you know, you got to have some reserve, just like we all do in our personal lives, you know, for when that water heater goes out or whatever problem. If you have a house, you've got problems. And if you don't have some money set aside, you're going to be hurt. And it would be, we would be remiss if we didn't have money set aside to ensure that we provide a sustainable water system for our community. And Sean, I appreciate your comments. As far as the sunset of the rate increase, that's, I mean, we will evaluate each year, and we will adjust. I can tell you that if I were going to be here in 2042, yeah, we were probably going to sunset a lot, because that's when our debt goes away. And I'm not the proponent, the only debt that I'm a proponent of issuing is debt to refinance to save our ratepayers' money. Otherwise, I'm a cash basis guy. That's the way I run my personal life, and that's the way I run your utility. But you're right, we have heavy debt, and that's the reality of it. But once again, we have the water resources that we need, that you can pretty much water your lawn however you want in the summertime without the fear of having mandatory conservation if you want to pay that bill. I can tell you what, I'm very careful about how I water my lawn. And we do have some resources. Katie Helm in our department, she works on conservation and has some resources that can help you to be more efficient in your water use. So I think I've covered everybody, Mayor. And again, thank you for the opportunity to provide this service to the community.
Oh, my goodness. I didn't expect to see applause after you talk about a rate increase. You did a good job, Dan.
Cherish the moment, Dan.
Yeah, cherish the moment, that's right.
It's short-lived sometimes.
Just wait till you open up that D. Blankenship@FountainColorado.org email tomorrow. So, yeah. All right, Councilmember Hanton?
Yeah, so I just have a quick question for you, Dan, before. So grants, are those grants state or federal grants?
Those are federal grants.
So now, we all know what's happening in the world, right? And so I just want to make sure that we are aware of that.
Yes.
Potentially go away.
I've heard that there was a judge who made a determination that all of the current grants that are underway will continue, because they're basically in progress.
Right.
So hopefully that will, that will hold. Or we'll get everything done before--
And we're going to analyze everything.
Before they pull the plug on us.
Yeah, for sure. And then you talked about the EPA. That is also under review as well. So just understand, all these things can change at a moment's notice, right? So we have to go with the ebb and flows of how things are put upon us, right, by our leadership. And so we just have to understand that these things can easily change. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that.
Right. And if you know somebody's struggling with their bills, we have said this repeatedly for years up here, don't wait until you're getting your three-day notice to get your stuff turned on. You know you haven't paid your bill or been able to pay your bill for 30 days, 60 days, whatever. Reach out to the utility department, if it's utilities, and apply, find out about the Light in the Load program. If you want to help people in town, you can donate to the Light in the Load program, and that money will go to assist people. It goes to the Salvation Army, they have a rigorous review of that, so the same person can't keep getting it over and over and over again. Some of the organizations will work with you to try to help you figure out why you're struggling every month and what are some things you can cut. I've done that with my kids when they were growing up. Do you really need those 25 apps on your phone that you're only paying $2.99 a month for? That it all adds up? So, you know, there's a lot of places out there willing to help you. Use the food pantries. Don't be ashamed, I've volunteered over there, and there's people there all the time, and they will say to you, if you can't pay utility bills, if you're struggling to pay other things, come use our services for a month or two till you get back on your feet and you get back caught up. There's no shame in that. And a lot of them now, you go in and you shop. You don't just, sometimes you get a box and you get whatever. Other times, you can go in and shop and just pick and choose what's good for your family. So those are all things you can do. You know, we're all struggling with stuff going up. And insurance on your car going up, insurance on your property insurance going up. So don't be afraid to use those things or embarrass, because they're there to assist you. And a lot of times, you've paid into them, and if you need to use them a time or two, it's okay. So Mr. Rick?
Dan, I might be brain damaged. It's always possible. We had some cold weather the last couple of weeks and snow, and I believe you guys postponed some turnoffs because the weather was so bad. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you for doing that. Thank you for being compassionate and putting that off so that we're not turning it off when it's super cold. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from staff? Council? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, and I hope you all come back. Don't make it a one-visit thing, come on back.